Get started. Yep. All right. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. This is our regular meeting for July 16th, and we are starting on time. With that, I'd like to offer some thoughts. We've gathered together to make decisions on behalf of Apex citizens, and we're all blessed to be able to have freedom to live in this town of Apex in the state of North Carolina and this country of the United States of America. Without fear, we gather, not worrying about an oppressive government. We don't have fear of speech censorship and without fear of having our earthly possessions confiscated and our family members incarcerated unjustly. On behalf of everyone up here, we wish to thank all those who protect us daily, who keep us safe, who keep us free, and especially those who gave their lives to secure our liberty today. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, among which are the right to life, the right to liberty, and the right to pursue happiness. And in order to secure those rights, we, the people, consent to be governed by our own. So here we sit as council members and also citizens, may we today govern in a way that is fair, that is just, and that is wise, and may we seek the wisdom from any and all sources that are wiser than ourselves. Please join me for a few moments of silence. Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the Apex Town Council meeting. Just as usual, if you intend to speak during the public forum, you need to come sign the blue sheet up here on the ledge. If you intend to speak during one of the public hearings, then you need to sign one of the yellow sheets. Either way, if you intend to speak tonight, you need to make sure you have looked over and become familiar with the speaking guidelines, which is the yellow sheet that was out on the pedestal outside. In addition, there is an agenda out there, so if you missed it, feel free to go get one now so you can follow along. With that, we move straight into presentations, and tonight we welcome Kenneth Withrow of the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. Mr. Withrow.
It's a great pleasure to be back with the Apex Town Council. I was here back in March to give you an update with regard to the Southwest area study. And this presentation at this particular time will be basically the recommendations in map form from the Southwest area study. We have completed the work through our consultant. We've taken into account the work that you all have done with regard to Apex, Advanced Apex, and the other plans that were being developed in the area, and what we want to do is just provide those very quickly for you. As I said, we'll go over the next steps with regard to the process. The original Southwest area study, of course, was endorsed in 2012, and basically this is an update that will be incorporated in our 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. One of the things I want to share with you, of course, is safety, which is an important component with any transportation system. What you see here on the map are areas where there was significant crash history throughout the region. Of course, largely on your major arterial facilities throughout the Southwest area study, we've addressed that in light of the crash history that we have seen with these proposals for in terms of improvements along the various roadways, which include modernizations, new locations, and widenings throughout the area.
So Apex is kind of in the top part there, right?
Yes.
These maps, okay.
Yes, Apex is the top, and we work down toward Anjer and Harnett County.
Okay.
And let me just refresh, I'm glad you brought that up. Basically, the Southwest area incorporates largely Western Wake County, southwestern Wake County, and northwestern Harnett County as far as a coverage area. And we've been doing this as far as an iteration for the Southwest area, the northeast area, and the southwest area of our planning jurisdiction. And again, this highlights the various elements or improvements that we're looking at, and we, of course, included or incorporated what had been worked on with regard to Advanced Apex. We also took into account drainage for the particular roadways that you see here, from two- and three-lane undivided to your four-lane divided facilities, as well as possibly looking at six-lane divided along NC-55 bypass in Holly Springs with additional interchange improvements and new grade separations and new interchanges.
Is there like a final timeframe for when these are thought to be important to have?
Well, these are part of a vision plan.
Yeah, how far in the future is that?
We're looking out to 2050. Ultimately, we incorporate it in the 2050 plan.
Okay.
And so, as a focal point, in light of that, one of the things we wanted to hone in on are some improvements, of course, within the town of Apex, taking into account what would be needed in terms of grades, separations, and improvements throughout the region. And there's some highways or some additional features I want to address as we walk through this study. So let me go ahead and continue to move forward with regard to that. One of the elements that I want to address in light of what we're talking about in terms of roads are what are called hotspots. What do we mean by hotspots? Hotspots are congested areas or bottlenecks that are not currently addressed by the state. These are particular areas that the Capital Area IPO, in conjunction with the local government, have determined to be important areas and features that need to be addressed for the movement of transportation or for transportation movement in the area. And we have a total of eight that we were able to look at within the study. Two significant ones in the Apex area include, of course, the number-one project, which is called NC-751, I'll go into detail about that, as well as NC-55 in Apex between Technology Drive and US-1. This particular feature, when we look at 751, of course, it concludes in terms of designation at the US-64 intersection headed into Chatham County going west, or actually northwest. The idea is basically to continue that facility traversing south along the outskirts of Apex, bypassing, of course, Holly Springs Fuquay Arena to eventually terminate at NC-42 in Fuquay Arena. And we have some features along that, which I'm going to show in just a few moments, but this is one of the hotspots along with NC-55. And of course, you see the list of projects that we've taken into account throughout the Southwest area as far as that is concerned. One of the things we wanted to show in terms of the hotspot, which is a key hotspot for the NC-751, included improvements, basically a bypass of the New Hill Historic Community, widening this to four lanes and making significant improvements as it goes past or goes over Harris Lake, and taking into account the growth that's going to be occurring in that part of the area. The next hotspot I want to, of course, go to is NC-55, which is between US-1 and Technology Drive, very heavily traveled. I've driven it many a time, and of course, there are some significant recommendations that are being made with regard to this particular highway. We're taking into account improving or incorporating an interchange at Jesse Drive, street connectivity through the area, and trying to make a free flow right from NC-55 onto NC-55 from East Williams Street. So the idea is to lessen the congestion in light of the growth that is occurring in that particular hotspot, and that's going to be important not only for Apex but for Holly Springs in light of the growth that's occurring in that area. And this is just another schematic of what we're looking at in terms of possible component of the highway, where you see the highways that stands with grade separations, roundabouts, and looking at how we can get that traffic moving between the growth that's occurring here on US-1 all the way down into Holly Springs. So those are some things that we're being really addressed in light of the growth that's occurring there. The next thing that I want to share with you are active modes. One of the things that's important to understand with regard to transportation, we just don't look at highways. The other modes are going to be very important. And one of the things I want to address with regard to active modes is all these modes used to, in previous plans historically, when it regards to transportation planning, were usually afterthoughts. And now they have risen to the forefront because we are looking at ways in which we can make not only vehicles mobile, but making people mobile as well. And so let me just share with you those active modes. This incorporates what we call a low-stress network. It basically takes into account in a schematic form possible linkages throughout the Southwest area, from taking into account the AT&amp;T in Apex, possibly going all the way down to Anjer, using these trails of low-stress networks, using the various creeks and access points there to get to these various locations. We noted various parks, schools, and other destinations that would be very useful. So this is an opportunity in which the community can visualize and vision getting kids, parents and kids, to use other alternatives besides motor vehicles to get from point A to point B. Along with that, we, in a unique fashion, included safe routes to school as a part of the planning process. This is very unique in the fact that we've incorporated safe routes to schools as far as a program for the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, and now we've incorporated that as far as the Southwest area study is concerned. And what we did was we looked at a total of 10 school sites, 13 schools, two of them are in Apex, where we looked at ways in which we can improve the movement of pedestrians and bicycles to get to the schools. And again, this puts safe routes to schools or puts the platform of getting kids to school beyond being an afterthought. It now becomes more ingrained in our community or in our communities to have kids walk and bike to schools they had been doing about 40 or 50 years ago. The other thing that I want to share with you includes strategic connections across the CSX line. This area was very significant in Apex, in that the desire was to look at ways in which we could have the rail yard moved. So we looked at, number one, grade separating a lot of intersections that exist along the CSX line, and then, two, look at what can be done with regard to the current rail yard that exists downtown. And so the idea had been provided to establish a potential new location not too far from Bonzel on this side of the Wake-Chatham County line, which is not too far from the existing mega site in Chatham County. It's about a mile-long possible rail yard that could be useful for what the state would deem useful in terms of how they develop that mega site. And so this is one of the opportunities that we provided. So again, you're looking at grade separations along the rail corridor, beginning at Laura Duncan, going all the way down to New Hill-Holloman, and then looking at ways in which we can take that rail yard and have it moved here and have it be a productive facet for the community. Now, this piece that I want to share with you is still under discussions with the Rail Division of NC DOT and CSX. They have to agree to this, but we wanted to put that forward as far as a recommendation, possible recommendation.
Thank you.
Is that the best spot? Are there spots in Chatham County that you guys thought about, too? Like, I know this would be on the study, but that thing could go, that yellow box could go further to the southwest theoretically, right? Or maybe not?
Theoretically, it could, but within the confines of the study, we wanted to look at an opportunity that was available, and this property showed itself to be more very attractive for that opportunity.
Okay.
So with that in mind, we also included transit. So take into account, and we appreciate the work that's being done with regard to the wait transit, we're looking at ways in which we can take the existing lines involving Go Raleigh, Go Triangle, Go to Cary, and to incorporate a possible bus line from Apex down to Anjer using 55, and circulators, and I know that that's something that the town is looking at right now. So these are some things that we're looking at to, again, have more than one platform for the movement of people and goods in our area. And again, this puts transit in the forefront, and it's no longer an afterthought as far as a mode. And of course, we also included the commuter rail opportunity that would possibly come through Apex and go to Raleigh as well. So the next steps beyond the presentations, again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here, we will, we've had a presentation with Harnett County. Holly Springs is getting the same presentation today as I'm giving right now at this particular moment in time. We'll walk this through the various other communities, and we desire to have this put before a public hearing on August 21st with the Capital Area IPO, which at that particular time, we desire to receive an endorsement. And once it is endorsed, is an adopted plan, and then we can do various things with it as well as include within the 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan.
All right, thank you, Mr. Withrow.
Thank you.
Ask one more question.
Sure.
Did this study think about the CSX line between Apex and Durham and changing that to something different, like a rails-to-trails or transit possibility?
No, we took into account it as an active corridor, but we didn't go into detail since it was outside of the study. But yeah, we still see that as an active line because CSX has an active line to this particular moment in time.
Okay.
And one last thing, I'm glad you brought that, not only brought that up, for those who are interested in the report, please go to thesouthwestariastudy.com as well, or you can go to Capital Area IPO's website, and you can look at the report, and we still have that up for your review.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're now into a time of consent agenda. These are items that are generally considered to be non-controversial, and they're enacted with a single motion. However, if any council member wishes to pull one, they certainly can do so. At this time, since no one has mentioned that they wanted to pull one, I'll ask if there's a motion.
Motion to approve.
No second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, thank you. And I just want to point out, since Mr. Carisona came, he was one of the people that are being appointed to the Parks and Recreation. See, Mr. Carisona, there you are. Yeah, just waved so the council members know who you are. There you go. Thank you very much for being willing to serve. And Mr. Brown was not able to be here tonight. All right, so we now move to regular meeting agenda. This is where we set our agenda for the evening, and quick, oh, sorry, Mr. Roach, reappointed. I see you back there. I see that hand.
Old news, old news.
Yes, I apologize for that. Oh, okay, so back to our agenda, regular meeting agenda setting. Other than council members.
I'll postpone on that.
Okay, all right. So I'll ask for a motion to set the meeting agenda for the night based on what we have printed.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, the agenda is set. We now move to public forum. If you intend to speak, is there anybody on the blue sheet? All right, well, I'll open the public hearing, public forum time, and then close it since no one has signed up. We'll now move into public hearings. Public hearings number one and two, we will hear simultaneously since they are connected. Thank you very much. These are for a piece of property that we might annex and might rezone depending. We will consider them both together. As everyone knows, we don't rezone unless we annex it first, but that way we are legal when we rezone. But we certainly don't want to annex if we intend not to rezonate. That's not nice to the property owner. So with that, Ms. Doherty-Meyer is going to present tonight. Come on up.
All right, this is Annexation 658 and rezoning case 19CZ08 located at 3112 New Hill-Holloman Road. The property is located in this general area in New Hill. The property to be rezoned is 2.413 acres and is located on the west side of New Hill-Holloman Road, south of Church Road, and adjacent to New Hill Community Center. The property contains an existing single-family dwelling. The property is also seeking to be annexed. The property is currently zoned Wake County Residential 30. The adjacent zonings are, to the north, you have Wake County General Business District; to the east, planned commercial conditional zoning, as well as Wake County Highway District; to the south, you have Wake County Highway District; and to the west, you have Wake County Residential 30. The applicant is proposing to rezon this property to neighborhood business conditional zoning. The 2045 land use map identifies the proposed site as office employment, commercial services. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use map designation. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on March 21st and May 7th, 2019, and a copy of both neighborhood reports are in your pocket. Before reviewing the proposed uses and conditions, I'd like to point out there is a permitted use that has been removed, which is a communication tower and public safety, as well as one additional condition that is on your sheet at your seat, so if you want to refer to that as we move forward. A full list of the proposed uses are located on page two. Uses such as restaurant general, restaurant drive-through, medical or dental office or clinic, business or professional, restaurant sales general, and microbrewery. Those are a few that are being proposed. The applicant has provided three architectural conditions specific for non-residential buildings that we typically see. A full listing starts on page two as well. There are three proposed conditions I would like to point out. The first one is the parcel shall include a north-south cross-access driveway easement to provide connectivity to the adjacent parcels. The second one is direct access to New Hill-Holloman Road shall require a northbound left-turn lane unless access is provided to Church Road, in which case, direct access to New Hill-Holloman Road shall be constructed as a right-in, right-out only. And the third, which is the new condition being proposed, is all non-residential buildings are to be preconfigured with conduit for a solar energy system. Approval of the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it will allow non-residential uses within the area while providing flexibility for future development with the surrounding properties. The planning board heard this at their June 10, 2019, meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Planning staff can recommend approval with conditions as offered by the applicant. I'll be happy to answer questions as well as the applicant who's in the audience.
All right, does any council member wish to ask a question?
I want.
Okay.
You mentioned the north-south access on both sides.
Okay.
Can you tell me what the requirements or how you work with the applicant to, so my understanding is the optimal way this will develop is having that, the access point off Church Road to be directly across from the neighborhood that's going to get built to the northwest, which is not touching this property, but it will be directly perpendicular from that. Is that correct, first of all, and also how will that interact with the north-south access point?
Okay, so that condition is basically if the north and the south property eventually go to rezoning, and it just allows a better connectivity, so it's not just parcel locked so with the easement it'll provide.
But will it be, will you guys encourage it to be to the western side of this parcel so that it could possibly get to that kind of north, to the northwest, basically, from the area easier than if it was just directly perpendicular to the New Hill-Holloman Road?
That is interesting. That is more of a minor site plan related. Probably the transportation engineer would probably be better at with that comment. I can also have the applicant provide an idea if he has an idea of what's going on, what he would like to do with that. But that typically would be at the minor site plan.
Okay. Yeah, because I think, I think in a perfect development world, it would, all four of these parcels would develop, or maybe even the fifth one down there, and you'd have that one access point from the Church Road, and it would kind of all connect very seamlessly. But because we're doing this one at a time, I can see the chances happening of that happening less easily.
Correct. But with the condition, this will provide the ability to have that and to be able to require that minor site. So that is the goal, which is depending on when, if the parcels come in.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. It is exactly good to note that the future change could be implemented. So if one day, 10, 20 years, or whatever, that road becomes very busy, theoretically access could be off to the side and limited here with some changes.
Right.
And if we've seen anything that we've learned over the last few years, if you have a parcel like this, is to make sure that there's, I can say, back of property connectivity between non-residential parcels so that people can move parking lot to parking lot. Sometimes it actually is helpful if you're doing it piecemeal. Instead of as a big shopping center or whatever, you can sort of develop it like Legos, right? You just connect them.
Right.
Connect them together.
I just see the best, to me, my, I'm trying to think of the best access point would be where that little point happens at the northwest during part of it, and so that would be like where kind of.
Over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that seemed logical to develop it that way, but that's, I think if it was all together, it might be developed that way, but maybe the applicant can speak that, too. Also, I know this was on the public art map, it was, there's a dot in this vicinity for a gateway to Apex area, so can you confirm that in one of these, one of these parcels will have an easement that'll be, or may have to build the art as part of their site plan?
That would be something that we would potentially ask for at minor site plan.
Wouldn't it be any zoning conditions or anything? Because it would be already kind of automatic.
If it's part of the map that's approved, yes.
It could be part of the zoning conditions, I believe.
Well, I don't know if this is the right parcel for the art to be on, I just want to make sure that dot has some art associated with it at some point.
Staff would look at it at minor site and see what the best, work with the applicant on what the best option would be.
Okay.
I also noticed there's no buffer conditions at all in here. Is there going to be a buffer along New Hill-Holloman?
Correct. Depending on the use and what the adjacent use is, that would be a year requirement. So like at minor site, we would have a buffer. It just depends on what the use is and what the land use classification would be based off the minor site, and based off that, we would use our buffer chart to figure out what would be the type and the size, but yes.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Ms. Doherty-Meyer. I'll open the public hearing, and I see that Mr. Roach is here. Come on up, Mr. Roach. Are you representing the applicant?
I am, yes, sir.
All right, well.
I put it on easier for Donna to get my name.
Yeah, that's very good, yeah. As you know, up to nine minutes for the applicant, so.
Thank you, sir.
Parry away.
Mr. Mayor, Jeff Roach, Peak Engineering and Design, members of council, thanks for the time tonight. I have a couple of points here, I'll be brief, but I would like to go back to Mr. Gant's question and also Ms. Killingsworth's questions real quick while they're kind of fresh on my mind. Mr. Gant, you're exactly right. Our goal is, was to work with transportation to have the cross-access from Church Road parallel to New Hill-Holloman Road. We see Church Road being a larger intersection, and as you start getting closer and closer to US-1, it's going to be harder and harder to get a full-access movement for some future large development. So we see Church Road as a long-term, excuse me, long-term primary access getting up there. The alignment over to, I think it's Holloman Hills, would be the best, but there again, it depends how the properties develop out. So it could be the Marcus Wilson piece, which is the piece directly north of us, it could be the ATM development piece that goes next. But with that cross-access agreement, it has us committing to doing that. We hope that when they zone, they'll do the exact same thing. So it'll get us up to Church Road. That's the first question you asked. Second one is, public art is actually not on this property, it's actually on Marcus's piece north at Church Road. So when they come back in to zone, it doesn't have to be a zoning conditions because it's already on a town's adopted plan. So it will be there eventually. The third one, Ms. Killingsworth, you asked about buffer standards, and staff was right on with, depending on what the use is, if it's a class-three use or a class-six use, will depend on what that front, north, southeast, and west. depend on what that front, north, southeast, and west buffers are. At this point, there is no tenant lined up, there is no end user that's saying, this guy is coming to the site, so we can't say that the buffer's going to be 30 feet or 60 feet at this point. But it will follow those standards and the ordinance to go through the minor site plan process with staff. Hope that addresses your questions real quick. Now I'll go through the real quick points, and then I'll be done. I promise I won't take all seven, 10 that's left. The property is currently zoned Wake County Residential 30. We've got a number of commercial uses or commercial zoning around us, they are all Wake County zonings. I apologize, let me get back here. So as you can see, all the zoning out here, with the exception of the Holloman Hills, is all Wake County zoning districts. The GB is general business, which is basically Apex's B1 zoning. The HD is kind of a morph between a residential and a commercial zoning, more of a holding pattern, but again, that is a Wake County zoning. The 2045 land use will control that more than anything to come in with either the office employment or the commercial retail services at that corner. Of course, you got the planned commercial across the street, which is the New Hill Community Center, and then Apex's Fire Department is just north of that, the fire station is there. The project is really the first non-residential to come out in the New Hill area in a while, down in this intersection, I know you guys approved one a couple of weeks ago up in New Hill. But generally, it's kind of starting the ball rolling in this area to kind of get some interest going for non-residential at this interchange, not just a typical intersection. So you heard tonight with the Campo presentation how important this 751 corridor is eventually going to be, four-lane meeting divided, having this non-residential, you know, intersection here is going to be very important as Apex continues to push west. Holloman Hills was approved for residential, there's more residential with Jordan Point, Jordan Oaks, Jordan Vista's, Woodbury, Olive Ridge, coming up there, so the commercial services are going to be needed whether it's here or whether it's in the New Hill, old US-1 intersection, so it's needed. And then the other thing to look at, some of the conditions that staff went over, address some of the big issues that we've heard from council over the last couple of years, is, you know, the restriction on the uses, no noxious uses, crazy uses that are out there, the non-residential architectural standards, future cross-access agreements, and of course, restrictions out to New Hill Olive Chapel Road, we met, I'm sorry, New Hill Holloman Road. We met with Russell on it, and those were a couple of those transportation conditions came in, was to make sure that this doesn't turn into a nightmare trying to get in and out of the site. A lot of that will also depend on who the end user is, because a traffic study may also be required. With that, we respectfully request your support of annexation 657 and zoning 19 CZ08 for the property. Thanks for your consideration, and I'm going to save my last four and a half minutes for whatever questions, comments I can help answer.
Any questions for the applicant?
So did you, or the traffic folks that work for Apex, think about the cross-access to the west, to the yellow one there? Yeah?
Heading this way?
Yeah.
It's pretty much a landlocked piece, right, I mean, it's on Church Road, but there's a creek that comes right through here, Mr. Gant, that area. So we will go for it, we have to get environmental calls on that creek and what's there, but we envision coming in with what's the ATM site, which is that yellow one behind us, as well as Marcus Wilson, as well as the Morrison property to the south, so yes.
So there's, okay, you said a creek there, so it's unlikely to develop the same way as this one is?
It's kind of, it kind of cuts the corner of our property and kind of angles through. We don't know if it's a buffered stream, we don't know if it's just a little pocket of wetlands, what's there, but the idea is for all these properties to come in together, eventually, you know, have cross-access. We've seen the same thing happen up at Green Level Church Road, at Green Level West, with Freedom Square and Goddard coming up there. The same thing, the same condition was there for a cross-access agreement, it actually did a very nice job of tying those four parcels together. I see the same thing happening here.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Not hearing anything else, I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter back to council for possible motion.
I'll make motion approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion?
Mayor, can we clarify this, both for the annexation and for the rezoning?
Yes.
Annexation and rezoning.
All right. All right, thank you. And that's with all the conditions as submitted by staff, with no new ones added today, just for clarity.
I believe there was a new one that was added that's...
Number six.
Number six.
Oh, I'm sorry, number six was...
It's on the staff report.
It's on the staff report, but it was...
On the staff report.
Oh, this one, this piece of paper.
Any use was...
Gotcha, okay. All non-residential buildings are to be preconfigured with, right, yeah, right, okay, got it. Okay, with that condition added, all right. Any discussion on the motion for approval for both annexation and rezoning?
I'm going to step up. I really like non-residential. This is neighborhood business, which isn't the perfect thing in terms of what we've tried to do for bringing employment here. That said, I look at item number five on our legislative conditions. Design minimizes environmental impact. To me, that's critical. I look at what's happening in the world, and I think that everyone, everyone needs to commit to trying to fix not only problems within Apex, but worldwide problems. And with that, I would hope that, would have hoped that they would have come in with a minimum of five kilowatts of solar PV, renewable energy, but that doesn't seem to be the case. 2.4 acres, five kilowatts is minimal impact in terms of costs or anything else. So I'm definitely going to vote against this, and I will vote against any others that come up like this.
Any other discussion on the motion? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, that passes by three to one, and we now go to public hearing number three, and before we, this is 19 CZ02, I see the applicant has requested a continuance to August 20th. Since that has been requested, I'll ask for a motion from council.
Should I move?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue this hearing until August 20th. Discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that is continued until August 20th. Public hearing number four, this is for UDO changes, and Amanda Bunce is presenting tonight.
All right, good evening. We have eight UDO amendments tonight, and as usual, I'll pause after each one to see if you have questions. The first three are, come from, out of the planning committee, are recommendations from the planning committee of the town council. So the first amendment deals with the section that requires a minimum planting width for buffers, even when there's a public utility easement that runs through that buffer. Currently, that is, there has to be a minimum 10-foot planting width, and the proposal is to increase that planting width to 20 feet when it's along collector streets and thoroughfares. This will allow more room for plantings and additional screening from the road.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, when we talked about this before, the consequence may be they have to get cut down at some point to do utility work in the easement, but then replanted, I guess, is that kind of what you get expected?
Well, I don't know that that's...
Oh, it's from the edge of the, sorry, from the edge of the easement.
It's measured from the edge of the easement. Yeah, no plantings are allowed within the easement, and so the goal is to ensure more of a planting width there.
Right.
The next amendment is to the single-family residential mass grading section, in order to increase the amount of additional RCA from 2% to 5%. So that is the change recommended here, and just as a refresher, mass grading is when a subdivision, there is grading for infrastructure and more than 50% of the lots prior to the first plat, and this applies to single-family detached developments only. Okay.
Miracle.
Amendment three is to the stormwater control measures section in order to require peak flow attenuation for the 25-year, 24-hour storm event, and provide volume control for the 10-year, 24-hour storm event in the upper Beaver Creek Basin, as shown on the proposed revision to the watershed protection overlay map. This is the, this is Apex overall, and I'm going to zoom in to this area. So currently, this additional stormwater standard applies in the Williams, northwest tributary to Williams Creek Basin here, and so the proposal is for it to apply to this area as designated on the map. And if there are any questions on this, Marty Stone is here to answer questions.
Questions on SCS?
Moving on to the UDO amendments requested by staff. This amendment is more or less a cleanup. Currently, in the planned development districts, side setbacks are the only ones with a specific amount, all other setbacks are allowed to be determined at the time of planned development zoning approval, and it's set up in those district sections for it to be that way. So the proposal was just to change all of these numbers to reference that section to be consistent with the other setback requirements. Okay, easy enough. The next amendment is to the vehicle use screening section in order to allow the planting area along non-residential vehicle use areas adjacent to sign and rear property lines to be a combined 10-foot total width when those properties are developed in conjunction with one another. And so I'm going to skip to an image, because this will help display that. So this is an image from our UDO, but I want to show a real-life example. So essentially, this is in Beaver Creek, this is the current standard of eight feet on either side of the property line, and this is in the Lake Pine Shopping Center, where Kroger, now Harris Teeter, is located. This is a 10-foot area, and you can see there's not much difference in the amount of plantings that are within those buffer areas. Now, these weren't necessarily developed in conjunction with one another, but I wanted to find a real-life example of 10 feet versus the 16 feet to show you. So if the parcels develop one at a time, they have to provide that eight-foot planting area with the standards that I'll mention, and just the tweaks we're making, proposing to make to that section in a moment. But if they wanted to go ahead and develop that planted area, and go ahead and plant it out, develop it out, ahead of time, say, this parcel wants to go ahead and build this out, then it could be a combined 10-foot width, and it could allow more uniformity in the spacing of the trees and the shrubs to make sense. So you're still going to get the shrubs, you're still going to get the large and/or small trees.
What are the neighbors, the small trees, would that be?
So it'd be like crepe myrtles or other understory small trees, there have to be more of those than large trees.
Maples?
Depends on the type of maple. Some maples do not do well in vehicular use areas, such as the red.
Yeah, the red is bad news.
Yeah.
Too hot, I guess?
Yes, yeah, it's heat sensitive. So we are proposing to replace the Type B buffer standard, which can be difficult to meet in these areas, with the standard that this planting area shall contain large deciduous trees spaced no less than 40 feet from another tree, or small deciduous trees spaced no less than 20 feet from another tree. It's very similar, but just gives a specific planting standard, easily understood.
Why do you choose just deciduous trees? Like the southern magnolia might be something that could go in there, and that's not deciduous.
So in speaking with Arizona compliance officers, which assist us greatly on landscaping reviews, and they have the background and training in that, they recommend that because in the summer, when it's hottest, they give, deciduous trees often have the larger canopy. And so we're looking for trees that potentially are more of a canopy tree than other types of evergreen trees.
So in that case, we would be talking about maples or yellow maples or...
It could be certain types of oaks, perhaps.
Crepe myrtles, I don't look as a real tree, it's kind of a bush tree.
Right, if they're allowed to grow like they're supposed to, then they can be a true tree.
Yeah, I mean, when I go to parking lots and I look and I see these little trees, people aren't trying to park under those, but you look at any kind of a real tree in the summer, and that slot's typically taken.
So we try to allow for flexibility with the planting of small trees, just because depending upon the length of the buffer area to be planted, you may come up short and be able to fit in another large tree, where you would be able to fit in a small tree. It also allows for a variety of design for aesthetic purposes, but primarily just fitting in, especially when you have that eight-foot beside the eight-foot, if someone's already planted a row of large trees, you might not be able to fit in another row of large trees on that other side of the property line.
I agree with that.
So...
I was looking at the 10-foot wide situation, where everybody's doing the same thing at the same time, and going for the real trees.
Was this asked for by some commercial development that's coming online, or is it just you guys noticing that?
We noticed in the review of a couple of commercial developments that this could be somewhat problematic, and there could be an advantage if the commercial parcel were to be able to develop that buffer area at the same, you know, in conjunction with the other parcel owner, but no request specifically from anyone.
To me, it seems like 10 feet is a little on the narrow side to get real trees back to real trees, so hopefully it's done. It's wide enough, yeah.
Amendment six is a cleanup in the sign illumination section. This section, all electric signs, is also intended to apply to lighting for externally illuminated signs. It refers the reader to another section for lighting associated with building ground-mounted fixtures and accent lighting, so we want to ensure that those lighting standards are applying to those signs that are externally lit, and not just internally illuminated signs. Number seven is to change the name, this section title, to the transit advisory committee and include the provisions for this committee in the UDO. As you know, Apex is participating in the Wake Transit Plan and implementation of that plan, and a committee was formed to provide comments on that plan, and it was then tapped as a focus group for Advance Apex. And so with the adoption of our transit plan and continued participation in the Wake Transit Plan, it was recognized that this committee needs to be formalized. So the standards that are proposed are very similar to the planning board and the Board of Adjustment. I will point out that the number of members is proposed to be nine, with up to three members being ex officio, non-voting members consisting of town staff, so that would be something that's unique, that does not exist at planning board or Board of Adjustment. And then generally speaking, the rest of the standards are pretty much the same as for the planning board and Board of Adjustment. Any questions? Shannon Cox is here to answer any questions you may have about that committee.
So doing this, we are going to do the committee, like we're going to start naming people to the boards, like in the next month or year, I guess? Is that my understanding of...
That would be the intent, the designation of those members is the same as for planning board of Board of Adjustment, the process for naming the official members. So that would be occurring, assuming, once this gets adopted, then that process can start.
Okay. So we don't have to like separately create that committee, it's, this effectively creates it?
There's already a committee that exists. They meet quarterly, so that's also something that's in the, this UDO section as well, that it's not a board that meets monthly, like Board of Adjustment or Planning Board, it's quarterly.
Okay.
Okay, and the last one is the easiest one of all, and it's essentially a correction to a section number, changing a two to a three. We discovered while looking for something else. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed UDO amendments. The planning board unanimously recommended approval at their July 8, 2019, meeting, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? All right, great, thank you, Ms. Bunce. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, public hearing? Yes, thank you. So I'll open and close the public hearing, no one signed up, but we've gone through the formalities. Thank you. All right, so I heard a motion being made somewhere in this direction.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. All right, in a second. All right, any discussion?
I just wanted, in case you guys were wondering, yes, non-committee, and we hear a lot about trees getting cut down, and neighborhoods getting kind of moon-scape before they get built, and so I think this, going from two to 5%, maybe it doesn't sound like it's that much, but if you count as a fraction of total area protected, it's going to be more like 15%. So I think, hopefully it's appreciated, hopefully it's not going to be disruptive to the... So I think, hopefully it's appreciated, hopefully it's not going to be disruptive to the developments around, but in case you're wondering where that one came from at least, that was, our committee was trying to react to some of those, do an incremental step that's going to protect some of these areas that, not just the buffers, but that can serve as wildlife, kind of areas for wildlife, more than like a random street buffer would be, so.
Glad to see it.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for the clarity.
We debated about higher, and I just, we're not sure that, how much, we don't want to, like, you know, turn the market upside down with something that's crazy. So I think incremental step is still a kind of penalty for the mass grading, but maybe not one that's going to change how everything develops, but I think something that's going to be helpful for everything, for stormwater and climate and all these things.
Okay.
Yeah, we can take a look at it, and we did talk about more. Take a look at it and see what this does for us, and then certainly not go backwards, but possibly add some to it if we need to. I mean, I went out and looked at Jordan Point, and I just, it's one of our better developments I hear, but I looked at it, and it was just a moonscape practically, and that's not the development we want, I'm sure, and it's certainly not good for wildlife. Maybe in 50 years, when everything grows up, we can all go out there and look at it, say this is good.
Well, speaking for the bunnies in my backyard, it took them all of about 11 to figure, actually, seven, because it's been five years of rabbits. I'm waiting for the hawks to swoop in.
All right, I'll call in the, not waiting for, but that's inevitable, right? I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. That takes us to the end of public hearings, and with no old business or unfinished business, we now move into new business. And we have our finance director, Vance Holloman, here to tell us something good, because he always has something good to say about finance. Mr. Holloman, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, and member of the council. You have before your resolution this evening that will make certain findings and determinations required by general statutes concerning a potential financing of an administration and warehouse facility for our electric department. That resolution also directs staff to file an application with the local government commission for issuance of an electric revenue bond in an amount not to exceed $9.5 million for that purpose. In addition, it requests that the commission sell the debt by means of private sale to Pinnacle Financial Partners, as recommended based upon an RFP process undertaken by the town, to obtain the best financing rates in terms available.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Holloman?
What's the interest rate that we're getting on this one?
2% for a 20-year period.
You deserve a bonus.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Don't say that in front of the town manager.
Well, we're very fortunate. The financer was, is a Pinnacle Financial Partners merger between Bank of North Carolina, who's provided us with financing in the past, and we've had a good relationship with, and we've gotten a very good rate from them.
It's not germane to the vote, but I'm really curious if citizens of Apex want to purchase municipal bonds from their own town, can they do that, or do they have to go to Pinnacle Financial Partners in order to...
Well, this will not be publicly sold. This will be...
So it's a private sold, and they will not ever be publicly sold?
No, sir.
Okay, gotcha. All right, so this is for...
Our general obligation bonds are publicly sold, and typically, you go through a broker for those.
All right, all right, very good.
But no one's buying 2%? It's too low.
Not really, but you never know. There's always somebody who wants to invest in their town, right? All right, I'll call for the vote, or motion, well, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Discussion on the motion for approval?
I have a question. Vance, is this bond, these operate a little different than like our parks and rent bond, where they're paid for?
Form of security is different in that those are general obligation bonds, and they were supported by a pledge of the taxing power authorized by a vote of the citizens. These bonds are supported by a pledge of the revenues earned by our electric fund. And there's no pledge on our taxing power with regard to this debt.
So instead of making a $9.5 million withdrawal from our electric fund, we are financing it over a 20-year period?
Yes, sir.
At 2% interest?
Yes, sir. This is a large project, and we feel, based on our capital improvement plan, that we need to finance this project with debt.
And considering how strong our financial report is, it's not a bad time to leverage that for a very good interest rate?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Now, your vision on, like, do you run the debt the course of the 20 years? I know there's a lot of factors involved with kind of what's going on in that fund. Do you pay it off early? Do you run it the 20 years?
Well, we're very fortunate in that among the, as well as the very good rate, we were also offered a prepayment option with no penalty. So should things work out in the future that we feel we do want to pay that off more quickly, we can choose to. However, we have the flexibility not to and pay it over the full 20 years if we choose.
Good terms.
Yeah, very good.
Especially with inflation being a little higher than that, we'd be crazy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion on the motion for approval, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now conclude that. We finished all of our open business. We have a couple of matters to go to closed session for, acquisition of property and preserving client, attorney-client privilege. Are there any other items that we need to state for the record that we will discuss in closed session? Okay. All right, so those items, I'll call for a motion to go into closed session.
Should I move?
All right, discussion? All right, all in favor going to closed session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, we're now going to closed session, and there are no more items on the agenda tonight. Thank you very much for coming out.
Underestimated.
Sat too long in that chair.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing this imminent domain proceedings for Calley Road, Matrix Park, Q Road?
So, uh...
A second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All opposed, say, oh, sorry, let me start with the, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously, and there being no other agenda items, we are adjourned.
Check it out.
Yeah, that's a very smart idea.
Thank you, yeah.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you, thank you.
I hope we don't regret not going on up to $1 million on that thing. I guess we'll have to see, I guess we'll have to see. I mean, the problem is, the problem is, if we get, I mean, if he's willing to get close to five, right?